Okay, it is now 5:01 PM. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code of the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice was given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville would conduct a regular meeting on Tuesday, March 2, 2021, at 5:00 PM via the WebEx teleconference meeting link provided at the City of Brownsville Agenda Center. This notice and meeting agenda are posted online at the City of Brownsville website and Agenda Center. Members of the public who submitted a public comment form will be permitted to offer public comments as provided by the Agenda and as permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. A recording of the meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. It is now 5:02, we can call the meeting to order. I have Mayor Mendez present, I have Commissioner Cowan present, I have Commissioner Goloski Fasania present, I have Commissioner Gowen present, I have Commissioner Tetra present, and I have Commissioner Nice present as well. Mayor, you're all meet.
Thank you for that. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if Pastor Burke is here, we can go ahead and move forward with the invocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And here in Brownsville, once again, we thank you for the beautiful weather. We thank you for the rain we had last night, and Lord, we ask for more of it in a way that'll be good for us. For those people that are still struggling with broken pipes and other damage from the freeze, we ask you to bless them with the help they need and get their lives back together. For those that have lost loved ones, we ask you to bring the comfort they need, and for the others, we ask you to bring healing. Lord, we ask you to bring truth to our nation, from Washington DC to Brownsville. Bring us back together in true unity, the kind that recognizes you, Lord God. And for this meeting tonight, we ask you to lead and guide our mayor, Trey Mendez, and all of our commissioners, and everyone who is presenting everything, for the very best for the City of Brownsville. We ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now we will have a short moment of silence where we can all add our prayers to what has Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to our proclamation. The first proclamation is designating the month of March 2021 as Women's Month in the City of Brownsville, and Commissioner Goloski will read the proclamation. Commissioner, can you see it on the screen?
Yes, thank you. So, it is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating the month of March 2021 as Women's Month, whereas every year on March 8, people around the world celebrate International Women's Day to officially honor women's rights and achievements across the political, economic, social, and cultural spheres. Whereas International Women's Day was established as an official United Nations observance in 1975, and has come to be marked both as a celebration of the gains that have been made and as a protest shedding light on the struggle for women's rights, including gender purity, reproductive health care, and freedom from sexual harassment. Whereas last year, on March 4, 2020, various community organizations, among them Superior Health Plan, the Mexican consulate Spentanilla de Salud, Broca, and Healthy Communities of Brownsville, partnered with the City of Brownsville to celebrate Dia de la Mujer Internacional, and offered presentations of empowerment, entertainment, and information about resources for women. However, unfortunately, this year, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the need for social distancing, the event was postponed. Whereas March is Women's History Month, and Americans across the US commemorate and encourage the study, observance, and celebration of women's contribution to events in history and contemporary society. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Brownsville that the month of March 2021 be designated and recognized as Women's History Month, and Monday, March 8, 2021, be recognized as International Women's Day. Additionally, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of Brownsville and on behalf of all of our citizens, the City Commission humbly asks residents to join in honoring and remembering the contributions of women to both local, state, and national history, done on this the second day of March 2021. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is designating March 15, 2021, as Adopt a Dog Day in the City of Brownsville in remembrance of Derek Anthony Sines. This is sponsored by Commissioner Nice and Commissioner Tetra Kalifa. So, Mayor, I'll let you ask who wants to read that.
Well, it's sponsored by Commissioner Nice, so if Commissioner Nice is willing to read it, go ahead, sir.
I would defer to Commissioner Tetra if she would like to, otherwise, I'll be happy to.
Okay. Commissioner Tetra?
I'll go ahead and read it.
Thanks.
Um, okay. "A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Monday, March 15, 2021, as Adopt a Dog Day in memory of Derek Sines Day. Whereas more than 6 million pets end up homeless every year in the US. Whereas animal shelter employees in our community work tirelessly to help homeless pets. Whereas volunteers in our community help support homeless pets through donations of time and funds. Whereas pets make life better by giving people love, companionship, comfort, and getting us outside for exercise, and by helping us build social connections. Whereas our community recognizes the benefits of pets and its collaborating to reach our lowest rate ever for pet homelessness. And whereas Derek Anthony Sines was a native and resident of Brownsville, Texas, and a lover of dogs, adventure, and life, who passed away on March 15, 2021, at the age of 31. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville recognizes Monday, March 15, 2021, as Adopt a Dog in memory of Derek Sines Day, in remembrance of Derek Sines, and to honor and remember him by encouraging people to adopt a dog on March 15, 2021, and to recognize Derek for dedicating his life to cherishing dogs and to promoting the contribution that dogs make to the quality of life of dog owners. The City Commission humbly asks residents to join in honoring and remembering him by the virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, done on this second day of March 2021."
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now we can move on to our public comment period. We did receive six public comment forms. The first form received was Lydia Garza, and in that form, she stated that she did not wish to comment, but she wished to have her questions be followed up by the commission and city management. So, our next form received was by Corinne Garza, and she does wish to address the City Commission. Corinne, are you present?
Corinne Garza, are you here? Okay, Lori, also, on Lydia Garza, it looks like she submitted twice. The first one, she said she did not want to address the commission. The second one, she said she did, so if she's here, I'd like to give her the opportunity to address this if she'd like.
Okay, yes, sir. Lydia, are you here?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Lydia. You have three minutes, okay?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for that. Yes, I did submit two, and I was having some problems on the internet, but thank you, guys. Yeah, my first question is regarding COVID. I know that now with the numbers that are dropping, I just wanted to see what would require that threat matrix to be lowered from our severe category. I don't know what level we're at right now. On that same note, I know some of the information online, as far as the stats on the death cases, our overall cases, are not really available anymore on the internet or on the website. I do see the stats for this from the CDC, but nothing regarding our numbers locally, so I was wondering if they could post those again. And then, thirdly, I noticed that the sports park still has the basketball rims that are no longer available for our families and youth to use. I just wanted to request and see at what point they can put those rims back on. And then, lastly, I know there's a lot of talk about illegal immigration and whatnot, you know, in the papers. My only question to see if the city could provide that info for us is, from the illegal immigrants that are coming in, or immigrants in general, those with criminal backgrounds, are they being released to our city, or are they being deported back to their countries, or are they being, you know, sent to other cities nearby? And so, I thank you guys for your time, and I do look forward to hearing back from you guys. Thank you.
Lydia, thank you for your questions and comments. We received them earlier, and what we did was, we're gonna have the proper people within the city come back to you. Your email was on there, so they should be getting back to you within the next few days. If for some reason they don't, please reach back out, okay? Thanks.
Okay. I will. Thank you so much.
The next comment form was from Marlon Baskis. He did not wish to address the commission. He just wished to express his concerns that were forwarded to the commission and city management. So, our next person that would like to comment is Stacy Slovak. Stacy, are you present?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Welcome, Stacy. Go ahead. You have three minutes, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to share a screen, is that all right?
Lori, is that okay, or counsel, is that okay? I don't mean, I don't know.
It's giving me the option to do it, so.
The only issue is that this is a speaking-type engagement with the commission, and we have not verified the content of whatever else we shared.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, but just go ahead, if you can address this, please.
Okay, so, does that mean I cannot share, or?
Sounds like it. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry, it wasn't clear on when you make the comments, when you go and submit the form, it's not clear on any of that, since everything's, you know, changed to virtual, so.
I understand.
I had it written out for doing a share screen.
Okay, I'm sorry, but yeah, that's why I asked counsel about it, because that's the first time anybody's asked that. So, if you'd like to address this, please go ahead, just verbally, you've got three minutes.
Okay. On February 28, Mr. Mendez posted, Mayor Mendez posted on Facebook about the city's effort to help process the illegal entry of individuals from the Matamoros entry into Brownsville. Mayor and city efforts to help these large groups enter into our city does not serve the best interest of the residents of Brownsville. The city is using taxpayers' money, resources, manpower, and time, which could instead go toward the residents of our city who have lost jobs, food homes, because of these current catastrophic situations from 2020 through this year. Mayor Mendez's post indicated that these individuals be COVID, were gonna be COVID-tested, and any positive test will be quarantined. However, Mr. Mendez does not indicate where and who is paying for the sheltering, food, clothing, and several other resources needed to shelter these individuals. None of this is beneficial to our city. I want to emphasize and remind the mayor and commissioners that they are public servants to the City of Brownsville. Your responsibility to the city is to use taxpayer funds and resources, is for the residents of the City of Brownsville, and for the best interest of the residents of Brownsville. Your constituents want a clear explanation of how this city's help for these large groups to enter into our city will serve the best interest of the residents of Brownsville. Another issue I want to point out is Mayor Mendez's recent inappropriate responses to his constituents on Facebook, who express a difference of opinion, criticize or question his actions as mayor, is completely inappropriate. This is just, I wanted to show you an example of Mr. Mendez's replies on Facebook, which is why I wanted to share screen with you, but I'm not allowed to do that. And one of his replies on Facebook was completely unprofessional and disrespectful. Mr. Mendez is a mayor, and Mr. Mendez is mayor and representative of all of our city, and not just the one to agree with him. As the mayor pointed out on one of his other Facebook posts, he was well aware that criticism would come with this job that he volunteered for, and that's including the commissioners. Mayor Mendez and all the commissioners are public servants and should treat each city resident with respect and professionalism. That's all I have. Thank you, guys, for letting me comment.
Our next public comment form was received from Deborah Lorraine Bell, and she does wish to address the commission. Deborah, are you present?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Go ahead, Ms. Bell, you have three minutes. Thanks.
Hi, yes, okay. I'm here in Brownsville's Commission. My name is Deborah Lorraine. My public comment today is in reference to the border crisis that directly affects the citizens of Brownsville. As you can tell, it must be heavy on everybody's mind, as there have been multiple comments today. On February 23, 2021, Mayor Mendez was interviewed by a national affiliate of Fox News in regards to Joe Biden's recent changes in immigration policy. In the interview, Mayor Mendez mentioned that, and I quote, "We're still dealing with a public health emergency on the border, certainly." My first question for Mayor Mendez and the Brownsville City Commission is, how specifically are you prioritizing the health of Brownsville's citizens? Are the immigrants being screened for other diseases and illnesses? How can the mayor and the city commission of Brownsville demand that people of Brownsville wear masks, social distance, refrain from public activities, cancel annual events such as the Christmas Village, Charo Days, and yet turn around and openly welcome immigrants of which no one knows their health history? Additionally, where do the immigrants go upon arrival in Brownsville? This has not been made clear to the public. Additionally, how is Brownsville going to fund the recent surge in immigrants? If COVID-19 has caused as much havoc in Brownsville as the current administration repeatedly claims, then shouldn't any and all additional funding go towards combating the problem at hand and not perpetuating it? I know I personally would like some answers to all of my questions. I also know that it is not required of the mayor or the city commission to answer public comments right after I finish commenting, however, perhaps they can direct me as to where I can find the answers to my questions. I would really appreciate it. And as always, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Appreciate the comments.
Our next item is Consent Agenda Items 1 through 2.
This is a consent agenda. Do I have any motions?
Yeah, I have a question, though, on number two. We can take it separately, I guess.
Do you want to just pull it? You want to just pull it, Commissioner, and then we can discuss it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Will you make a motion then to accept the Consent Agenda Item 1 and pull Item 2?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes, item number two.
So, my question is, has this been presented to us already? And number two, how much is this contract for?
Commissioner, this is Lupe Renado. This is the first time this has been presented. This contract is a contingency contract based on a percentage of what's collected. The services that will be rendered is the company will search the accident records and try to recoup damages done to city properties in the cleanup and the repair of city properties. There is no cost other than a cost to the city, other than what is recovered through the insurance billing. So, there is no known amount that will be recovered, and the amount that would be going to the services that will be rendered, the services.
So, basically, you're giving them a contingency fee for recovering on our insurance claims?
Damages that are not currently being, that are not being billed right now, yes.
Okay, so, you're gonna make a claim because something got damaged of the cities, and it could be $100,000 worth of damage, and you're gonna try to collect 100. How much are we giving these people? I mean, why would you stick this in a consent item without even having it up for, you know, for us to discuss? What is the contingency fee arrangement? And can they do it instead of an attorney doing it? Because it sounds like they're collecting on a claim.
These are more to property damages, and we could, we could put it on a consent item or a consideration item, and it's only a percentage, 18% of what's being collected. And the majority of the items that are being collected is damages to signage, to traffic lights, items in that perspective.
Okay, isn't this something that our legal department can do for free?
There is a.
So, Commissioner Nice, this is a function of what the Safety and Risk Office does. We have staff within the HR department that does this. They don't have, however, the capacity to do all the claims. We basically fund this to our insurance provider, but that by no means is bulletproof. So, what this would do is basically supplement work where we don't have staff to follow through. Even the legal office may not have the attorneys to take on these types of claims, because you won't always have the return. Some of these will go through, some of them will not. So, what we want to do is, we have right-of-way throughout the entire city, we want to make sure that we're proactive about how we go about recovering costs, where we don't have the staff resources to provide for that on a periodic basis.
It seems like this is a legal matter, and that's why it concerns me that these guys can come in and get a contingency fee off of our legal claims, because they're property damage claims, and, you know, and they weren't discussed. Who negotiated the 18%?
This was part of, there was an RFP put out for the service. Legal was involved in the review of the contract and the documentation for the service.
So, the RFPs were sent out, and how many, how many did you get? How many responses?
Lupe can respond to that. Lupe, do you have that information?
One response was received. Advertisers were placed on the Brownsville Herald, and there was one response that was received.
And was there any negotiation involved? I mean, 15% is like a normal collection fee, 10%, 15%, they got it up to 18. Who agreed to that?
Let me check with procurement, but I believe this, the initial request was 20%. We did negotiate it down to 18%.
It sounds almost like subrogation claims, Commissioner. It sounds like they're going after, like, subrogation style claims. Is that kind of what it is, Noel?
Yeah, so, Mayor, these are claims that typically fall through the cracks, so we're typically aware of things that happen when, when we're made aware by either a claim that we get, staff is aware through our department, and that doesn't mean that our exposure is 100% covered. What this really does is look for areas that we have not been made aware, they go back and use the statute of limitations to retroactively look at damages in our right-of-ways where there was.
Okay, so, those are, that's legal. Okay, are they an attorney firm? Are they a law firm? Because what you're talking about is legal, and what is the estimation of all these claims? What is, give me a general estimation of the claims and how far back they go.
That's what we don't have, Commissioner Nice. That's what, part of what they do. We don't have that rough order of magnitude. I mean, we don't have a staff that goes back and searches damages to right-of-way that could be recovered.
Well, you're, somebody's bringing this up. How come, how did it come up, then?
Well, we're doing it as a best practice, because this is something that we should be performing and can perform through this mechanism, when we don't have the staff to do it on a full-time basis. And the cost recovery isn't always there to justify that approach, so that's where these type of services come in. We have more.
Do we know how many claims there are right now at this time?
We can put that together, Lupe.
You're trying to order a contract based on nothing, you know nothing about. You don't know how many claims, you don't know the value of the claim, you don't know if the statute of limitations are run, and you're letting some non-lawyers deal with all this.
So, well, we don't, we don't have the data here. We do have files, and we can provide that data. If you want to know what we put out for RFP, we did put out the claims that we have, because that's what their job is to do, is to determine that for us and then seek to recover that.
Well, somebody must know that there's some claims, or you wouldn't even be doing this. So, okay, I don't have any more questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, this is an action item. Do we have any motions on the item?
I'll make the motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay from Commissioner Nice. Motion passes, thank you.
Now we'll move on to items for individual consideration. Item 1 is consideration and action to approve the 2021 Historic Preservation Plan Schedule B, Planning and Redevelopment.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, and Juan Velas, Historic Preservation Officer, glad to be here. And this is the Schedule B. Next slide, please. So, here you will find the three properties on the Schedule B. Two of them are recorded Texas Historical Landmark with a 100% of tax exemption, and the other one is substantial rehab done in 2019, and also under the Schedule B. Next slide, please. So, you have any question regarding these three properties?
Those are the properties on Schedule B?
Yeah, that's right, sir.
Okay, this is an action item. Is there any motions on this item?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I just want to ask, before these are approved, do you all go out and make sure that the buildings are up to code, are up to standards, warranting the tax exemption?
Yeah, that's right. Mainly, all the structures are in good condition. If something happens, we give them certain kind of months to correct the, maybe the lack of maintenance or whatever, especially this year, that with COVID, it was not very easy, neither to work on the buildings nor to find workers on site. We do those reviews before we do these kind of introductions. Even so, we also give, let the property owner to have some time to fix them.
And also, Commissioner, the list has been pared down over the years, too, because there were some that weren't being kept up, so they were removed from the list.
Yep, that's right. You will see later on the comparison with the last year.
Thanks, Juan.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion on this? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay. I mean, I'm not opposing it, I'm abstaining. I'm sorry about that.
I'm abstaining as well. That's four yays, two abstentions, so the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next item?
Item 2, consideration and action to approve the 2021 Historic Preservation Plan Schedule C, Planning and Redevelopment.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Next one. Thank you. So, this is the only property on the Schedule C. You would see that it's unfolded due to its designations. Naturally, each property can only have one tax exemption. What it regards this slide is simply explaining that this house has both designations, the national and the state marker as well, on their property Schedule C, as you can see.
Mr. Velas, has the school district indicated what they're gonna do possibly this year? Because I know that they had removed some of these exemptions. Have you spoken to them, or have you gotten any indication from them as to what they plan on doing?
No, not yet. I don't think that they still have a kind of a tough time, adequate in the competence and so on. I have a conversation pending with them. I'm going to try to address the tax exemptions, but I feel that until we readdress a little bit the tax exemptions, we will, we will not get them bored again.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a very huge impact on their taxes, and as you know, the issue is that, from a taxes point of view, the impact of the money that they foregone for this economic help is multiplied by three or four, so it makes $1 million, and well.
Well, that's, that's what they say. I'm not exactly sure how that financial scheme works, like, on their end, as far as the reimbursements and things like that, but we, I know that we've heard that from them. Just so you see, Mr. Mendez. Just so you see, Mr. Vela, there's a discrepancy on year built. The top says 1961, the bottom says 1937.
No, well, then, then it's a mistake, sorry. This is a, this is a Romanian building design in 1961, and precisely, we only have two buildings. So the reason, yeah, it's 1961, and the reason why the building get the designation was precisely from an architectural point of view and also from the historical significance of the family that live here. So I'm so sorry, it's 1961.
I mean, it's, it's a national and a state landmark, so they obviously felt it was, it was worthy, so I don't have any issues. Okay, do we have any motions on this item?
So, so to clarify, it's not 1937 on the bottom gra- table?
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's 1961, as reflected on the top.
Yep.
Okay, do we have any motions?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
Please note my, I'm sorry.
I'm going to vote aye, I just didn't realize that I was on mute.
Okay, and Commissioner Nees?
Abstaining for me, Laurie.
Commissioner Nees, you are a nay?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four yays, a nay, and an abstention, so motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, consideration and action on approval on second and final reading of Ordinance Number 2021-1100.63 to repeal and replace Chapter 94, Section 94-57B, Historic Preservation Plan Adoption, and adopt the 2021 Historic Preservation Plan, Planning and Redevelopment.
Next slide, please, next one again. We have summarized the introduction that we did the other day because this is the second reading. We are summarizing the, the 2020, uh, number of properties that were included and the amount of money that the city will, uh, lose by supporting the program and the 2021 figure that it was already explained, 99 properties and $114,000. As you can see, I'm, uh, we are showing there four properties, uh, that are on the, this tax exemption program. The second to the left, the last year was substantial rehab. The property owner went through the designation and he got the Texas Historical Landmark for this very nice Craftsman's House. So as you can see, little by little, the program is extended. We are now, uh, kind of having a huge support also from CDCB. So in this case, I think that the program somehow is working and working a little bit better, but still has to be somehow addressed through a commission that we will later on explain to you. Next slide, please. So the Schedule A, as you see, was approved the other day, on February 16th. Slide, please. And the Schedule B and C were under consideration, you have already approved. Next slide. And this is the staff recommendation that was to approve the 2020 Historic Preservation Plan and to create absolutely this committee that we didn't do it the last year because, again, the COVID and so on. But it's necessary to tackle and to readdress and update the, the tax exemption code accordingly with what other cities are doing as well. You know, so what we are proposing is to review this, this kind of plan regarding the eligibility, the structural condition, the age, the level of incentives, considering the different designations and the number of years. So we can have a kind of revolving fund in which buildings could enter and leave the, the program in a natural way. So the people would know exactly what to do, for how many years will they stand in the, in the program. Next slide, please. All right, so these are questions that I'm open to answer.
Juan, I think that the slide, you're, you're going to create an ad hoc committee so that you can create revisions before March of 2022. Is that correct, or is that March of 2021?
No, no, it's ma- it's March 21, 2021. We want to, to have the approval, so it's somehow, let us say, aligned with, not exactly aligned, but at least updated as a UDC and so on and so forth, you know?
Okay, great.
Could, could you explain, you're asking us to repeal and replace Chapter 94, Section 94-57B. What does that section pertain to?
Yeah, that's the, that's a tax exemption. The stor- what, what is called in the Ordinance Historic Preservation Plan, but it's a wrong name. Should be only, let us say, the list of tax and sem- and buildings, you know? So what is repealed is the list of the last year, and, uh, the new list that, uh, has to be approved will enter into the, into the code. Okay, that's always, it, it always happens every single year, you know?
You went from 95 to 99, is that what the first slide was? So the list has increased.
That, yeah, that's right, sir. So every single year we have to.
It's just the list of properties, is that it?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. This, this regards to the 99 properties, Schedule A, B, and C.
Yes, sir, it's, it's, it's a revision to the list. That's why every time you repeal and you, and then you approve, um, the list itself.
That's right.
The list of properties.
Okay, is there any other questions for Mr. Vela? All right, I'll look for a motion on the item.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm an aye, but I did not get to the mute button fast enough. I have to have it on mute because I have my five-year-old here, and he's talking to himself, as some of you may have heard.
All right, thanks, Commissioner. Was there any nays or abstentions?
I'm an abstain.
Okay, very good. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vela.
Thank you.
Item four, consideration and action on the 19th amended declaration of local disaster for public health emergency, City Manager's Office.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commission. This is the 19th amended declaration presented before you. The proposed declaration would be in effect until April 6th of this year. Next slide, please. We'll go through some of the changes that we have included, such as the occupancy limitation. Um, has been increased from the 50% to 75. Um, and then also requesting businesses to comply with the State, Texas Department of State Health Services. And the bars would also be opened up to 50% of the local established capacity and cease the sale of alcohol by 11:00 PM. Here, garage sales and yard sales would be permitted following protocols and requirements, health and safety. And also farmers markets and outdoor flea markets would operate at up to 50%. That was up from 25 to 50% of the total listed occupancy of the establishment. Next slide, slide please. The city library indoor facilities would remain closed to the public until such time the library reopening plan permits. I believe they are currently, uh, working on finalizing the plan to offer those services and would notify the public as soon as those, the libraries are open. And also city parks would be reopened for engaging in physical activities. That was something that we had already done. I would say that the equipment, some parks would, had still certain equipments closed. And so what we're doing is updating them and notifying the public as, as more parks, equipment, and amenities are opened up. Also, I guess this bullet point was already here, the tennis courts and golf courts was already reopened. What I do note is, um, I would ask Dr. Rodriguez to speak to the number of cases that we've had and, and the changes. I do understand there, there was a Governor GA 34 relating to the opening of Texas a response to COVID-19 disaster that goes into effect on March 10th. That executive order does for businesses to open at 100%. Um, and also does not necessarily require a mask, but does strongly encourage the wearing of face masks. Um, and that also depends on the level, if it's an area of high hospitalization, and then would give the county the authority based upon that. So, um, I would, I would like it to pass it to Dr. Rodriguez, um, and to give you a little bit of status on, on that.
Sure, Honorable Commissioners, good evening. So let me begin with our current situation. We've had three vaccine clinics, we'll have our first, second dose clinic. We vaccinated over 4,000 people at this time, first dose. And specifically to the Governor's order today, uh, which will take place in a week, we're looking at, uh, at the impact it will have. But one of the health departments, we're going way back to when we started in March, is to have businesses actually develop policies internally that protected their employees and, and in fact, that affected the customers by asking companies to have policies in the workplace, such as when you wear a shirt or, or wear no shoes, the, the company has many rights unto itself. And, and for the last year, that's been one of the ways in which we have enforced. And we're going to continue that, that same approach because it's worked well in the city. It, it hasn't been the, the hammer approach, it's been more the dance approach that we'll dance with the homeowners and, and, and do outreach and educate about the risks of COVID-19. And we've seen, for example, with the, the flea market folks, they've been at 25% with the 50%. We're going to continue doing the dance. They're going to develop a policy that's internal to them, and if they feel the 50% is still a, a risk, that they are using us more as a consulting role with the health department to go out there and see what workplace changes can be done to continue to protect the public. Moving to the positivity rate along those lines, it has been decreasing, it has been below 15%. But the Governor's orders does allow for the city, through the Governor's actions, to go back to 50% measures if the positivity rate goes above 15%. So, so we'll continue to read through his GA 34. But at this point in time, we feel that we've had some tools that we put in place initially that worked for us back then and will continue to work for us now. The key now is the new tool that we have, and that's vaccinations. Any questions? Thank you.
I do. So, uh, we're under the 15% rate right now?
Yes, sir, we've, we've been right under at about 13, 14%, but, uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, currently, I, I was monitoring that, but I didn't know where we were now. So, uh, we're trying to still restrict people to 50% with this particular declaration, right?
Well, the, the language in the declaration, uh, does also have language that puts us in, in harmony with the, the Governor's declaration. So in a week, when it goes into effect, um, you know, the writing, the language is on here, and Mr. DeCose can weigh in on this, it's still congruent with the Governor's order. We would make it work along that fashion.
And that's correct, Commissioner. We do have some catch-all general language that allows for our document, our declaration to be in harmony with the Governor's order as it becomes acted. And to answer your specific question, I think after the executive order takes, takes effect, then the general rule is state goes back to 100% unless the county is in the area of high hospitalization. Then at that point, uh, the governmental entities can, can use.
Can modify.
I'm sorry?
They can modify it at that point if it goes over the 15%.
Right, they can enter into mitigating, mitigating strategies and work with establishment, as our health department is doing, in order to help themselves.
So is it automatic that it switches over to the Governor's Rule 34, Declaration?
Yes, the, the measure, it says, furthermore, the provisions of this declaration shall remain in full force or effect during its pendency or until any provision or any portion thereof, because we're not talking about all the measures, we're talking about portions, is specifically addressed or countermanded by order of the Governor of the State of Texas.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Dr. Rodriguez, or counsel?
Dr. Rodriguez, I have a quick question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
The card that the Governor is giving us for requiring the mask mandate, do you happen to know off the top of your head if our city has ever met that threshold throughout this entire pandemic?
I, I know that a lot of the, the regulations and the rules, many, many of our constituents, many of our citizens have actually voluntarily worn the mask. I know it's been a mandate, but even through this, even after it's no longer mandatory, I, I don't know the answer to that specifically, but I know I've seen a lot of people around the city wearing the masks, uh, when they're out in public.
And I guess that would just be my follow-up, that the Governor, in my personal opinion, and this is just my opinion, people can disagree with it, that's fine. That bar was a little bit too high for the situation that we're in right now, and I feel like people still need to continue to wear that mask and be careful because, you know, one person in the family can infect, you know, multiple people in that home.
Yes.
Home environment, so I just, my personal message to everyone is continue being as vigilant and careful as possible despite, uh, the rollback with these regulations. Because it's very scary thing, and I've had many, many friends who have been affected by COVID and even, you know, had losses in their family, and, and my heart goes out to them, and there's nothing that we can do to bring those people back. So I just would continue to urge people to be as cautious as possible despite these changes in the rules.
Commissioner, I want to add, at this morning's hospital meeting, you know, it was, it was a stark reminder that in our area, we've had a higher per capita number of people die from COVID than even at the county next door and even at the state level. I believe we have been at a 4% mortality rate. The, at the county level, it's been a little bit lower, 3.6, I believe. And then at the state level, it's been much lower, almost 2%. So at a state level, when you're looking at state data, it almost seems like deaths are 1 or 2% is small. But when you take a vulnerable community like ours, masks, social distancing, and all the measures that we continue to push are working, they've worked. And, and when you compare the border communities, Brownsville to Laredo to El Paso, you know, we, our positivity rate has been lower than some of those communities. And it's because of the combined efforts of the hospital meetings, the city commission's support throughout this, you know, pandemic situation. This could, could have been worse for us if it wasn't for the support we've received from yourselves and the hospitals and the communications. However, the fight is not over. We, we need to continue this and the vaccines until we reach a stage where they call it herd immunity. Most people have either had the COVID or have been immunized. And to them, we need to continue wearing our masks, social distancing, and sanitizing. Thank you.
So Art, um, again, my comp, I think that your department and the fire department, as well as emergency management, is doing an amazingly wonderful job. And I would add to what Commissioner Tetro just said, there are no medical experts or infectious disease experts in the country, much less the world, telling us to put our masks away and put them in a drawer that we no longer need them. So whether the Governor says that or not, he is not a infections, disease expert. And with all due respect, everyone should continue to wear their masks until the people that really do know the risks advise us that it is safe no longer to do so. And finally, Art, do you want to say a word about the people that are scheduled to come in and get their second dose on Friday? Will they be receiving instructions soon?
Yes, thank you for that. This Friday, we're having our first second dose event. It's, uh, at the I-Tech from 8 to 12. Your pass to this event is the, the card that you were given when you came in for your first dose. You were given a vax- a vaccination card. We asked that you bring that card, that is your ticket into the event. There is no registration for this event. Your card is your registration ticket to the event. If you lost your card or you can't find it, and you did come through us on the first dose, come by. It will slow down the process for you individually, but we will find you in the computer system and process you anyway. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any other questions or comments?
Lastly, I have a comment. Now that we've seen these changes in regulations, I know the city has been doing a wonderful job of making sure that we have all of the resources available where people can get vaccinated. But I feel like if we could just. But I feel like if we could just be more, just a little bit more proactive and aggressive with getting that message out to the community and offering a place where, you know, maybe we can list all of the places and links where you can sign up. I just want to offer the community every tool that we have at our disposal with these changes coming on board.
That's a really good point. What are the platforms that are being used to disseminate? Because everybody has the internet and can get onto BTX Care. And there's others. What are y'all, what are y'all using to get out the, the information?
Yes, those are great questions. And it makes me very happy to say, you may recall a few months back, I mentioned that we actually had some trucks that we had outfitted with speakers that were going to neighborhoods where people didn't have internet access and our boots in the ground. That has not gone away. We continue to do some of the things, really the old fashioned way, getting an loudspeaker and, and doing the campaign style, get out and, and go to the local vaccine when it was drive-through COVID testing, but now for the vaccines. We continue to message to call us at the hotline. We've added a COVID-19 hotline as well.
I totally know about that hotline. In other words, are you on the radio and are you on TV?
I will, I will actually be on the radio tomorrow at 2 o'clock on Spanish radio, sir. And we have done that in the past. And we've done a few interviews as well. Also, the BTX cares and the social media is just one aspect of what we're doing. The other aspect has also been to get on the Spanish radio and Spanish TV as well. And then getting into neighborhoods and doing the, the loudspeaker messages. So we have many different formats that we've been using for a year now because we're really reaching an anniversary point. Thank you.
What, what channels are you using?
I would text you those. I don't, I know, I believe it was 105.1. I don't remember their Spanish acronym, sir, but I've been working with a local operator on that.
A radio station operator?
Yes, sir.
Not to mention the platforms that School of Public Health pushes our information out as well on 2750 and their Spanish news program every morning as well carries that information.
Good.
Yes, sir.
And I, I have seen very strong outreach from the city. I'm just asking that we, you know, I hate to ask you to do more, but let's push a little bit harder. And I know that every commissioner is available to help you with that mission if, if need be.
Yes. And I want to add, many of you commissioners are very active on social media, and you've helped us get a lot of those messages out. So we thank you for that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any other questions or comments?
I, I have a question. I have a legal question. Businesses can still require masks, correct?
That's my understanding.
I think that needs to be, to be, you know, clarified all over because I think that's, that's going to be an important point going forward.
You know, and speaking with Dr. Rodriguez, we always talked about you have a lot of establishments that says no shirt, no service. It's the same way. You can say no mask, no service. And so you do have a lot of establishments that do have that on their door. I mean, I think it would be consistent with that, but it's the attorney, if you'd like to weigh in.
Well, it's not a mandate from the city. It's something that is voluntary to every business, like you said. And they determine which way you conduct business with. So if they, this is a path they want to go down to, to keep it operating and giving services, that's something they should certainly do. And I think as Art has indicated, that they can be more like a, like a, somebody who can give them information, be an expert in this, in this regard, and, and give them tips and ideas as to how things are going in regards to the impact of this in the city of Brownsville. The health department can still be a tremendous resource for our area businesses and continue giving services that way. But yes, that is something that I don't think the city government will be able to enforce per se with fines or any other type of measure in that regard. As long as, you know, only if it, if it's in harmony with the governor's order, we can, we can, we can enter rules and/or aspects of our declaration to pinpoint certain aspects that are in harmony with the government order. But generally, we will default to what the new executive order 34 says. And also now, some of these powers have been centralized with county government. So we're also going to need to look upon them for, for certain rules and or regulations.
My understanding was that the question was if businesses are allowed to regulate in their own place of business, the requirement of masks. And my understanding that, that they are allowed to, within their own business, be able to require that, just like you would require other things like shoes or shirt.
And I agree with, I agree with you. I think I'm overly verbose, but I agree with you. No shirts, no service. It's the same concept exactly.
And Commissioner Cowan, another example is when you rent a, a party hall that they ask you to have a security guard present, a business can also require a person to be in charge of, of the disinfection and the wipes and the mask, just like the way they can ask for a security guard to be on the site. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Or wait, one last question, please. Since there's now going to be more of an urgency for people to get vaccinated, and there's still a lot of people that do want to get vaccinated but haven't been able to, to do so, is there any update on the city's plans for additional vaccine clinics? And then what would, what will happen once the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is available to the city?
So I, I saw on a Johnson &amp; Johnson call earlier today, a big question for health departments has, has been the refrigeration constraints that the vaccines carry. And the other is the life of the, of the vial after you open it. Nothing has really changed. And the three things that are the, the barriers right now is that there's a limited amount of vaccines. But with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine coming out, we feel it's going to open up the market to many more people being vaccinated. And also, the, the one-dose vaccine is really positive news because it takes a lot of work to put two, a two-part drive-through event for the same vaccine. And, and I think that's going to help to open up our resources to be more effective and efficient by having one vaccine that is a one-time vaccine. So as more vaccine is being manufactured, it's going to, to be available in many more places beyond the local health department, fire department scenario. It'll be available at the doctors' offices and at the pharmacies. And you start to see a more widespread availability of, of these lifesaving tools.
If the city gets the Johnson &amp; Johnson, will it have a separate event just for Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines? Or could it be commingled with the Moderna that has been given out in the past?
We're working on a strategy at this point. We did submit documents to DSHS expressing our interest to be a Johnson &amp; Johnson drive-through event as well. But I don't have an answer exactly for you now. I would think because of the lot numbers that are required for each vaccine, that we would probably handle each event separately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
To approve?
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be on that one.
Okay. Commissioner Niese is abstaining.
Okay, we have that noted. Item five, consideration and action to authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Brownsville Public Library System and IDEA Public Schools on collaboration to expand literacy opportunities library.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Chase Sunt, and I am a librarian with the Brownsville Public Library System. The item brought before you this evening is a MOU between the Brownsville Public Library System and IDEA Public Schools for the development and implementation of the Full Service Community Schools Program. The Full Service Community Schools Program is a federal grant that if awarded, IDEA Public Schools will be the lead, and the city's contribution is an in-kind service. With this funding, the development and implementation of various literacy efforts will be made available to lower-income communities and student populations in and around areas served by both the school and the library. In consideration of this MOU, IDEA will allow the Brownsville Public Library System access to facilities to provide both in-person and virtual services, as well as a partnership for future literacy initiatives. The library in turn will issue student cards, welcome packets, book bags, and access to library services, including our virtual and in-person programming. Through this, we'll keep with the system's legacy of providing opportunities for both, for growth, discovery, and opportunities for bold ideas and leaders to thrive in a space that can be seen as not only brave, but also safe. I am also joined with Jill Dominguez from IDEA Public Schools, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions at this time. Thank you.
I'll gladly make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chase. And Jill, thank you.
Item six, consideration and action authorizing city manager to sign lease for the children's museum for the demised premises as described in the lease, city manager's office.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. My name is Deamis McGlon. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Brownsville. The city constructed a building at Dean Porter Park that's occupied and operated as the children's museum in approximately one-half of that building. They requested the city's assistance for expansion to meet its long-term growth needs of more than 37, 500 square feet. The rapid growth in traffic since 2005 has increased by 20, 2,150% from 2,800 visitors to 63,000 visitors annually. The city recommends to add the allocated square footage to the end case of Suite 5, the building that they currently occupy, and to include the Ringled Civic Pavilion. The expansion will benefit the community for growth of the museum's offerings to the public. And the children's museum's annual economic impact is estimated to have grown by 110% and is expected to continue to grow with an expansion, with the expansion having an ability to increase ticket sales by an additional anticipated 15% or a projected $860,000. Its expansion would enable increased local economic impact through tourism. I also have Mr. Felipe Pena, the Executive Director of the Children's Museum. He should be on the call as well to answer any additional questions. Oh, there he is. Hey, Felipe.
Do we have any questions?
I'll gladly make the motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Item seven, consideration and action to authorize the joint funding agreement for water resource investigations with the United States Department of the Interior, U.S. Geological Survey in the amount of $2,616,800 to be funded by Texas Water Development Board loan proceeds, application number 13647, Engineering and Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me? Perfect. All right, if we can go to the second slide. This item is a partnership with USGS. We are currently working with them on phase one. They've already installed a couple of gauges. They'll be monitoring them. The idea of the partnership with USGS for the second phase, this is in conjunction with the Texas Water Development Board loan proceeds. The second phase includes 21 SCADA locations. And the idea is that by partnering with USGS, since this is an entity funded by the federal government, they will take over the monitoring stations, and they will provide all the science necessary to gather data and to make the best use of that data so that we can provide more accurate models. By doing this, USGS will take full responsibility of servicing them and making sure they're up to date and that the latest software is installed on these SCADA stations so we don't have issues like we've had in the past for, you know, the software changes or it becomes obsolete and then we're stuck with the maintenance of these stations. So this is what US, this partnership with USGS will help us with that. The amount of their contract is 2.6 million. And this is being funded, like I said, through the Texas Water Development Board Flood Infrastructure Fund. The, we do have more, the Texas Water Development Board Flood Infrastructure Fund is for a total of 4 million. The remaining balance, or the 1.4, is utilized for the installation of some of the COVID improvements that we'll be doing. If y'all have any questions on this particular item, I'll be more than glad to answer them at this time.
Does anybody have any questions at all? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doro. Do we have any motions?
To approve. Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, discussion and action on resolution number 2021-022, approving the bids received on the tax resale property on November 3rd, 2020, Financial Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Dino, thank you. Go ahead.
A brief presentation on this one piece of property on East St. Francis Street. There was a resale conducted on November 3rd, 2020, a few months ago. And the highest bid at that resale was $11,500. This, this property's actually been off the books for a while. A judgment was taken back in December of 2019 for less than your bid. The judgment amount was $9,788.79 at the first sale back in March of 2020. There were no bidders. So it was good that we were able to get this up for resale and received that bid at 11,500. There were costs involved for 2,629. Once costs were taken care of, the amount to be dispersed among the entities was, is $8,871. The amount for the, for the city share is $2,395. But more importantly, if approved, this gets back on the tax roll, and the current appraised value for this piece of property is $14,650. And one other quick point, early in the year, we started with online tax sales. And note that the individual who purchased this property was from Arkansas. And with the opening of these tax sales to, to online services, there's an indication that we're having more prospective buyers. So that was just a one quick point we wanted to make. Other than that, unless you have questions, that's all we have.
Is that a, that's an empty property? I'm looking at the map.
It is. It is. The, the last page, if you have it on your packet, shows a picture of the empty lot.
I see it. I see.
Dino, if I'm correct, it looks like an empty half lot. It's a back lot, right? Is it a half lot?
Right. I honestly, I can't tell if it's a, I mean, it, it doesn't go street to street, but that might be a full lot on, on facing St. Francis.
It looks like there's no ingress to it.
Right. It looks like a half lot. It's on the back.
Yeah. But how do they get the picture? I guess.
Yeah, I see. You're right. I'm looking at, you're right. Yeah, that's got to be a half lot. They must have access through, through some type of easement, Commissioner.
According to the last picture, it looks like it could be an alley or maybe an alley. Okay, well, anyway, that's fine.
Okay. Any, do we have any questions for Mr. Sparza? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sparza.
Thank you all. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Our next item is executive session. I'll read the item. Uh, item one, consultation with attorney pursuant to section 551.071, subsection 1A of the Texas Government Code on pending and or contemplated litigation related to claims by the BPOA and others regarding the city of Brownsville's 457B plans, City Attorney.
All right, you have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll now, uh, go to executive session. Thank you.
It is now 6:12 PM and the city commission will go into executive session.
Executive session, no action. Uh, the next item is adjournment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? All right, you said adjourned. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Be safe, everyone.
Aye.
There being no further business to come before the city commission, upon duly made motion, the meeting is adjourned at 6:44 PM. Everyone have a good evening.